I'd like to begin this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are able, please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the approval of agenda with an amendment.
Roll call, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
House Member Alamos.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ingalls.
Here.
French.
Here.
Mayor Shippers.
Here, thank you. Now, we need the approval of the amend- of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended to add comments by Mayor regarding the market at Cadillac Commons before public comments and remove it from the city manager's report.
Sorry, Ken.
House Member Hopkins.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Alamos.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, now I'm gonna read this statement regarding the market at Cadillac Commons, okay? Clarifications regarding the market at Cadillac Commons facility. The city of Cadillac has been made aware of recent online statements by Mary Galvanic, owner of the Cadillac Farmers Market LLC concerning the tragic murder of Charlie Kirk. Ms. Galvanic is not an employee, official, or resident of the city of Cadillac and does not speak on behalf of the city or in any capacity. Ms. Galvanic is a private business owner who, like others, has rented public space under the city's standard facilities use policies. Several people have contacted the city requesting that Ms. Galvanic be removed from the market and/or that the city prohibit her market from operating. To clarify, the Cadillac Farmers Market LLC is a private business and that business rents public space called the market at Cadillac Commons from the city. There's another market that also rents that space on different days. The market at Cadillac Commons is a public facility located on city property and owned by the city, no different than the rotary performing arts pavilion or plaza, which are other city-owned facilities located at Cadillac Commons that are available to be reserved or rented out. Ms. Galvanic operates her business as a private vendor on city property but is not affiliated in any way with the city. The mission statement of the city of Cadillac is as follows. It is the mission of the city of Cadillac to be a well-managed, environmentally conscious, physically responsible, appealing community in northwest Michigan. We will encourage and advocate for an environment of living and working that is founded upon a strong community spirit of trust, broad-based citizen involvement, and dignity and respect for all, regardless of gender, ethnic, social, or economic backgrounds. The city's obligations are guided by the facility rental agreement, city ordinance, and the First Amendment. The market at Cadillac Commons is a public facility. The city must administer access to it in a content-neutral manner. That principle applies equally to speech we may find offensive or to speech we may favor. To be clear, the city does not endorse any comments made by Ms. Galvanic online and any such comments do not represent the position of the city. Our city remains committed to respect civility and compassion. Ms. Galvanic's statements are her personal views and not in any way the official statement or policy position of the city of Cadillac. And we are all entitled our personal views. That's my statement, okay? And now, as we go into public comments, let me remind everybody and those of you who may be here for the first time. This opportunity for public comment provides the public with a chance to make a statement regarding any subject matter. Public comment is not an opportunity to necessarily ask questions or converse with city council members or other meeting attendees. Contact information for all of us is on the website. You can also, the website is www.cadillac-michigan.net or can be obtained by calling (231) 775-0181. Comment time is limited to three minutes and unused time may not be yielded back or given to someone else to use. I would also ask that as you get up to speak, if you would state whether or not you are a resident of the city. Folks have asked me to do that. Also, I want to remind everyone that we are neighbors and I expect civility. There will be no cheering, no jeering, no shouting, no outbursts. If this happens, I will gavel you. If you continue to disrupt, I will ask you to be removed. Are we clear? Okay. With that, I will open public comments. Please sign in and all that.
I pre-signed in, so in an effort to save time.
And please state your name.
Okay, thank you, 'cause I would not have done that, so thank you for that heads up. Ruth Ann, I appreciate that. My name is Beth Ann Gould. I live in Herring Township, Cadillac, Michigan, and I'm here to speak. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. Public speaking is not something that comes easily to me, but I felt it was important to share my heart. Recently, I was removed from a few community groups for sharing my opinion. My opinion has always been and still is that any group that continues to have Mary as an admin loses credibility in my eyes. This is simply my perspective and I stand by it. At the same time, I believe everyone has the right to their own opinion, including Mary. I also have the right to disagree. My hope is that we can all learn to hold space for one another's voices even when we don't see things the same. I especially want to thank Susan Gift House for restoring my ability to participate in her advocacy group and for reaching out to me personally to say that she could see I had done nothing wrong. That kindness meant more to me than I can express. Still, I must admit, I feel my voice has been silenced within my community in some ways. While my comments were restored, they were connected to a post that was later removed and I also have been banned from other community spaces for expressing that same opinion. This has left me feeling like my voice doesn't fully belong in this community and I am struggling to call this town home. I also watched my friend Stacy Lico be silenced in our community for speaking about her girls and what happened to her. That has been deeply painful to witness and I now know exactly what it feels like to have your voice silenced in your community. To my friend Stacy, I say thank you for helping me see I need to use my voice as well. I do know I am not alone, though. Many others, at least thirty people that I can count, have had their voices silenced too. To each of you, I heard you and I appreciate the support you've shown me in return. I want to thank Mary and Susan for the time and energy that both have given to this community. I am personally grateful for the work that they've done for me and others and will continue to keep both of your families in my prayers. And may God bless us all, all.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Powell. I'm a proud citizen of Cadillac. I was born here, I was raised here, and I returned to live here. My parents, Gary and Diane Powell, have called home Cadillac their entire lives. Their commitment to serve Wexford County and Clam Lake Township has inspired my own dedication to public service. I currently serve in the Board of Review and am honored to be running for Mayor of Cadillac. I'd like to take a moment to wish both of my fellow candidates the best of luck in this upcoming election. I'm looking forward to a positive and respectful campaign focused on the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you. My name is Jordan Shepler and I just want to thank you guys for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm hundred percent certain none of you have ever seen me here in front of you before because I've never been here, so.
Welcome.
So, a little bit of choppy notes in my phone that I've been drafting throughout the day, but overall, I come to speak to you, I come to speak before you not as a, not as someone trying to side with politics, but as a concerned community member who cares deeply about the standards we uphold in our public spaces. The farmer's market is held on taxpayer-funded grounds and is meant to be a place for families, neighbors, vendors to come together regardless of their backgrounds or beliefs. Because of that, I believe the person who manages this market has a responsibility to represent the community in a way that is respectful and professional. Currently, the market is operated as a for-profit business by Mary Galvanic. Vendors pay her directly while the city provides a space. That arrangement makes her conduct and public image especially important because she is profiting while acting in a role tied to public resource. Recently, Ms. Galvanic made public comments about the death of a national figure, suggesting that his death was essentially deserved. To me, that is troubling, not because of who the individual was, but because it reflects a larger attitude that could be applied to anyone who loses their life in tragic or violent circumstances. Regardless of our differences, death should not be treated with dismissal or hostility. For someone managing a taxpayer-supported community market, that kind of language sends a wrong message. This is not about silencing her right to free speech. It's about whether our community is being represented in a way that reflects our values as respect, dignity, and inclusivity. A farmer's market should be a place where others feel welcome, not a place overshadowed by divisive and hostile public statements. This is why I'm asking you tonight not just to review this arrangement, but to take action. I respectfully request that the council hold a vote this evening to determine whether this is the best interest of the taxpayers to continue allowing one private individual to profit from running the market or whether it should be instead placed by, or placed under city oversight or reassigned to a neutral, non-profit that will ensure professionalism and inclusivity. On Facebook, our voices may be silenced by deleting comments or blocking people when our views don't line up, but we cannot be silenced here. This is a public forum and our community deserves to be heard. I don't care about anybody's political views. That's your right, but a loss of life should always be recognized as just that. The loss of a life, to dismiss or celebrate it is not acceptable and is not what we should, what we should expect from someone entrusted with representing a community space. Thank you for your time and I urge you to take action tonight for the good of our community.
Thank you. Someone coming up or just coming in?
Sign in quick.
State your name and if you live in the city, please.
Hi, my name is Jen Helfel and I am not a, I'm not from, ooh, I'm not from Cadillac. I am, however, a vendor at the market and so Mary's words do, they do reflect me. They do reflect my business, whether directly or indirectly. And I know it's a very tense subject. I know it's something that a lot of people have big feelings about. And I don't take it lightly, what happened to Charlie Kirk. And I don't take it lightly how his life and his words have affected so many different people throughout our nation and our community right here. So, I recently worked at the Cadillac Craft Beer Festival doing henna and I had a gentleman want some henna from me. And this guy has mobility issues that cause him to be very dependent on the people around him. And as I was drawing on him, his friends were standing nearby and he could hear what they were talking about. And it wasn't even a matter of which direction they felt about the recent tragedy, but I could tell in that moment, he froze as I was drawing on him, wondering what my response would be. And this is a guy on many levels whom the words of this public figure has had a tremendous effect, a negative effect. And that, it is what it is. It's the world we live in where we get to express our opinions, but to see a man frozen, wondering if he's safe with me, wondering if he's safe with his friends. And knowing that, knowing that I was able to hold space for him and his feelings, for him and his experience, was more important to me than mourning somebody who put him in danger, who puts his life in danger, just through rhetoric. And I know, I know, it's a lot of nuance and nuance is hard. It's hard on Facebook, it's hard on bumper stickers and we are a very bumper sticker society. And so, it's important to have these conversations. But it was my honor to provide a place where he could be, he could be himself, he could have feelings and not be punished for it. And Mary's words do offer that for a lot of people who don't look like me, for a lot of people who don't have the privileges I have, for a lot of people who don't have the access that I have. And a lot of those people are my clients, so thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Hi, my name is Sheri Ellenboss and I want to make it clear that I do not live in Cadillac, I live elsewhere. But the Cadillac Market, Farmers Market LLC is owned by three people, not one. Mary Galvanic, myself, Sheri Ellenboss, and Emily Miller. And we strive very hard to keep the market a happy, fun place for everyone, no matter color, no matter what. Rules are be nice and have fun. If you can't be nice, you can't have fun, you are removed. And yes, there were some unfortunate things that were, happened this year, but we will continue, or recently, but we will continue with those guidelines. And the market is a very fun place and it brings together a lot of people. I know we're divided right now and hopefully we can fix that, but I just needed to speak a little bit, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sheri.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Lang. I do not live in Cadillac, I live elsewhere as well. However, I'm a vendor at the market. And let me finish filling out your necessary stuff and then I will share some thoughts that I have on this. I too wrote some notes because I knew once I got up here and got the stress of seeing everybody on me that I would not be able to remember everything I wanted to say because that's the reality of it, I'm not a public speaker. I don't do this regularly. A few, I got here late, so I didn't catch a lot of things, but some of the stuff I said, and even Sheri mentioned it, the market has always been an extremely happy place. I have never felt unsafe there until last week and it wasn't because of the words that were put on Facebook. It was because of the way the community chose to respond to those words. And I didn't go to market, which affected my business, my income, my home. And it wasn't because somebody shared an opinion, it was because I was concerned that the city was gonna do something dumb, that somebody was gonna come do something dumb. And it had nothing to do with an opinion that got shared. It was the Lynch Bob mentality that everybody had regarding a comment. Because the way the world is today, threats like that that get made, especially behind a keyboard, tend to happen with like what happened last week. And that was unfortunate and we lost a great debater because of it. But, so, with that said, my actual speech that I did, I just wanted to say a few things. What's happening this week is small-town version of cancel culture. People are reacting to somebody else's personal opinion as if it's a reason to destroy their entire lives. I'm sorry, what's that? Okay. The kind of reaction doesn't just hurt the person that they're angry at, it affects their family, friends, everyone that's connected to them, everyone that's connected to their business. I may not even agree with an opinion. I didn't follow all of it because at some point, I'm just like, I'm done with this. So, I may not even agree with any of the opinions being on. I'm a completely neutral thing, all I know is what it, how it affected myself. So, what ends up happening and what moves forward in here is whether we handle the disagreement fairly and professionally. And I haven't seen a lot of professional handling of the disagreement. I saw a lot of slurs, I saw a lot of protests that threatened violence. Seen a lot of things, I did not see a lot of professionalism. I've also heard that we're supposed to read in between the lines and assume something that somebody else meant based on what you could read. I think it's important to remember that everyone interprets words through the lenses for the experiences that they have. So, if somebody reads a statement and they see hate, they're looking at that through their eyes, not through the speaker's eyes. And I don't think it's fair to judge somebody based on how somebody else chooses to interpret a word. So, that's something that everybody really needs to take into consideration. Her words are her own opinion. It's not a call to action, it's not an attack on anybody and we can acknowledge that without projecting assumptions onto her. And that's something that I really wish more people would take into consideration in this. We should focus on whether she can run the market professionally. In my experience, absolutely, hands down. She's done a phenomenal job. Ten years ago, when I started going there, Friday markets were Tuesday markets. So, the amount of vendors that were there on Friday were the amount of vendors on Tuesday. At this point in time, the market has grown exponentially. Like you go through on a Friday, it's great, like it is, it is phenomenal. So, my biggest thing is let's choose fairness, not fear.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I want to thank your.
Your name.
My name is Michelle Trieri and I live in Cadillac, Michigan. I'm a taxpayer here actually for twenty-eight years, so there you have it. I really enjoyed your public statement. I'd like to see it on the Cadillac website, actually, so people know that Mary Galvanic is not a city employee. My phone has been ringing off the hook because of one comment that she made on Facebook that escalated. And Mary knows how I feel as a spiritual woman. Thoughts have power, words have power, and they have consequences. Facebook also has a community guidelines. If somebody doesn't like something on Facebook, and you should know, you got your account deactivated. I had my account deactivated for god knows what, I just photographed pictures. But anyways, so I've been putting out fires, but talk about violence in this community. I, on my birthday, I went to Lake Michigan to do my water ceremony, as I do, and I overheard somebody at a convenience store here in town, not while not in the city, in Westwood County, say it's open season on Democrats. So, here we are, powerful, right? Open season on Democrats. So, this is the climate of not only this community, but of the White House and around the world. And I know there's a real Christian conservative movement going on and that's wonderful. That's just embrace it, but I'll tell you what, Jesus Christ did not come onto this planet to cause division and divisiveness and have people pitting against each other. And so, if that's what people are stooping down to do, then they are working for the dark side, period. Because the dimensions of division and hatred have no place in a Christian community. And this is somebody who spoke about Christianity. Well, I'm here to tell you, I am a Christian. I'm a Native American woman, I'm a woman of color. I've taken my hits in my life and I know Mary Galvanic personally. I've worked religiously behind the scenes with her and Susan Galvanic to make sure those people got their wells tested and everything and the city wasn't poisoning anybody's water. So, all I can say is I came here as a show of support for our community 'cause that really bothers me, what I heard, the statement coming out of town. And then I saw the threats against not just Mary and her mother, but her children. So, Facebook, again, people, Facebook, anti-social media, as far as I'm concerned. You get ahold of Facebook when you see something you don't like and think is filled with hate and they will take care of it. Thank you for your time. I hope we can have a prayer, maybe we can all get together and pray for unity and put forth love.
Thanks, Michelle.
Hi, I am Mary Galvanic. I am here to address the issues that are going on right now within my personal opinion and then how that's transpired into my businesses and the other things in the community. I am here to say that this community has played the telephone game with my original comment. I, I stand for minorities, I stand for marginalized people, I stand for LGBTQ as well as any other human on earth to have a happy, healthy life. I stand for all of us, I stand for local farms, I stand for clean water, I stand for equality. I did not wish harm on anyone. I would never and could never wish harm on anyone. I do have strong opinions and I do have a lot to say sometimes, but never in a million years would I ever want physical harm to come to a person. People who know me know that. I am not a violent person, I have never had a record, I've never done anything violent to anyone, ever. I do have a big voice and this is America, we do have freedom of speech. And so, I appreciate everyone who has been here to support that freedom of speech and to support people who are marginalized in our area. Last Friday, there were racial slurs being screamed by the protesters across the market. My mother was called several four-letter words by the leader of those protests. They came into my market screaming obscenities, I had to call the police twice. This is an angry mob of people. This is, these people do believe in violence and they do have records. I was raised with them, right here in Cadillac. I went to school with them. I've seen what they do to others. I will not meet them on that low-grade behavior. I will not choose violence towards them or anyone else. I do not wish harm on the protesters or their businesses or their families and I would never. So, that is Mary Galvanic, that is who I am. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary.
Hi, my name is Elliot Girdon. I live here in Cadillac, I run a local business. I have a screenshot right here if anybody, you know, would like to debate this statement I'm gonna make, but this was, this Charlie Kirk man was a dangerous man, very dangerous. He chose his fate when he chose hate towards innocent people. My heart goes out to his kids and everybody he has ever harmed. So, with that being said, feel like when a public figure, she's gonna come up, advocate for people as a spokesman for clean water. I would rather drink the poisoned water than allow somebody to represent my voice in any capacity ever that condones violence on a human life. I believe I'm the master of this protest that she talks of with racial slurs and everything else. I was met in the morning with, you know, a little bit of aggression towards a few people there that were running the market. We had printed out, you know, printed out a lot of paper, we're notifying and informing people of the person they're supporting and dealing with here. So, as I was going around to local vendors, you know, there were some Amish people there, gave them some pamphlets and then I get interjected with some hostile encounters, which what I would say was trying to provoke me to get to a point. to provoke me to get to a point, which, uh, you know, take the high road, I'm not going there. Uh, the police were called. Nothing happened. I had a difference of opinion on the law where stated, uh, you know, apparently Mary has total authority over the entire complex there. When she sublets out, each individual, each individual one of these people are renting a twenty-five by twenty, or ten by ten space for twenty-five dollars for Mary. So I don't see how she can have the authority to go around from a booth where if I rent a booth from her, that she has any right to come over there and tell me I have to leave. That is wrong, especially in a public place that I, I believe everybody here has paid for. Mary is nobody special. She's an ugly human being, in my opinion. And, you know, if we all can't get together on the fact of just a human life is like held to a high enough standard where we don't just take it over hurt feelings and stupid things like this, then we have nothing else to discuss. Religion, race, any of that stuff doesn't matter until we all get on the same board, a human life is at a certain level. Thank you.
Thank you.
I always feel my voice tight and just a little, looking at all of you.
We're not that scary.
And this microphone just gives like a weird audio. My name is Jerica Kylie. I live here in Cadillac. And I want to say that I'm scared for the world that my daughter is living in. Fortunately, she's only four. But I see the way that these people are acting online. These are members of our community. As a Christian, it is not right to call people the devil, the devil, no matter how much you disagree. I have not always stood in support of all of your decisions, but I would never wish Marcus harm. And I'm sorry that happened to his wife. Nobody deserves death threats. Marcus does not deserve death threats. Mary Galvanic's children do not deserve death threats. And if we cannot come to that in decency in this community, what else do we have to stand for?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Chris Peace Gore. I'm a Herring Township resident. Before I get started, I would just like to quote Mary. I don't feel super bad for the guy. He created this. I feel bad for the kids. I feel bad for the LGBTQ immigrants, blah, blah, blah. But she does not feel bad that someone lost their lives, Mary. I'm sorry.
Please address counsel. Thank you.
Um, regarding the farmer's market, I had vendors reach out to me. I do have a spot for people to go, which is the Veterans Park out in Herring Township. I posted this on Facebook, and there was threats towards the veterans. Just let you know, she is not the only one getting threats. So I am putting everybody on notice on both sides. The threats have to stop. If the vendors want to go to the Veterans Park, let them go in peace. If that, if her business goes under, you know what? Free speech has consequences sometimes. All she had to do was apologize. Now, it's not even about Charlie anymore, because I think about Charlie. She thinks I'm a bad person, and I don't deserve good food. And just keep digging the hole, Mary. Just keep digging it. So I'm sorry that Cadillac's name is affiliated with her farmer's market, and that's the problem. Maybe if she changes the name, you guys won't have an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no one else? Thank you. I'm gonna close public comments. And thank you, everyone, for your, um, your graciousness with all these comments. Appreciate that. Okay. Let's move on to the PFAS update.
Jeff, you're up.
I, 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 uh, really don't have much of an update tonight, but I do have a video that is online now. We will be having another video come out that, uh, this one talks about PFAS and wastewater. We are gonna have another one come out probably in a week or two that will talk about, uh, water and PFAS, or PFAS in our wellfields, or lack of, in our wellfields. So if Sandy wants to play this, uh, go ahead.
Here in Cadillac, Michigan, we work hard to ensure the safety of our drinking water and to protect our environment. Our families drink the same municipal water as yours, and they enjoy the same lakes, rivers, and streams. Protecting the health and well-being of our families and yours is our top priority. If you're on our municipal sewer system, your wastewater enters a network that includes fifty-four miles of sewer lines, which flow to our main treatment center. Once it enters the facility, water is cleaned in three main stages. In the first stage, we filter out sixty-five percent of the waste by removing solid debris through screening and sedimentation. In the second stage, we remove around thirty percent of the waste through biological processes that use beneficial bacteria to break down organic materials and other pollutants. In the final stage, we remove the remaining five percent of impurities and disinfect with processes like UV light disinfection. Wastewater is regularly tested for contaminants, including chlorine, phosphates, bacteria, lead, copper, and PFAS. The result of this complex process is water that's clean and ready to be released back into our environment. We even have a fish tank within our facility where we can observe fish living in the treated water. At Cadillac Utilities, we're proud of the work we do protecting our pristine northern Michigan environment and your family's health and safety. For more information about water treatment, visit us online.
So that's on our website. I think it's on YouTube now all over. Uh, you can go and look at it. Um, the fish were being fed. That's why they're jumping out of the water. That's a joke, folks. Come on. But, but they were. And, uh, again, we will have another video, I think, in a week or two. This, this will be on the water side. Uh, again, yes.
Hey, Jeff, uh, could you explain a little bit about, uh, there was an article in the paper about the comparability study between the three labs, um, that is happening? I realize there's no results yet, but maybe-
Yeah, I, I, I don't know much about it. I'm not involved in it, but my understanding is that the, uh, obviously the state and CycloPure are the two main labs, uh, the state lab and CycloPure, and they had some results that differed. So they're going back to, I think, those residents, or maybe other residents also, about twenty of them. They're both taking samples at the same time, and they're having a third independent lab also take samples. All of them are gonna, um, test for PFAS, and then they're gonna compare their results to see what the answers are. So if there's a, uh, you know, a difference, then they'll look more into it. If they're all the same, you know, I, I don't know what they're gonna do. Again, I'm not involved in that, but that's what the comparability is. They're, they're just trying to see where that difference between the two labs was coming from.
I heard that, um, that the third test has different layers of, um, different layers applied to make sure that there's no, to, to keep it even more accurate. That's what I heard from someone at the, at the department.
I, I, again, I'm not involved with Empart, so I would, I would not say. I would, I would think they're all using the same standard method test, and that's very spelled out how to do the test, and, and how low you can go, uh, with your, uh, levels of, uh, detection and that. So I would assume they're, they're trying to compare apples to apples to apples, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Well, and I think the good news is, this came about as a result of that May meeting that we had, uh, the open house, uh, where we had that presentation from Empart, where the discrepancy became apparent, and so now we're taking action to, or they are, Empart is, uh, to kind of figure out, uh, what may be causing it, or, and so that's a good thing.
And, and Empart now is only, I think, actively studying, uh, north of the city, uh, well, west of the soccer fields, west of Platt Road, uh, north of the city. Uh, in there, they're actively looking for stuff out there. But all the other areas, they seem to think are, they have the answers they need. So.
Thank you.
And that's it for me.
Thank you. All right. Let's move to the consent agenda, and the items listed are, um, we've got the minutes from the regular meeting held on September second.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Delmas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Neer Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. We have a community spotlight.
You do? Richard?
Sesko Centennial Update.
Hello, my name is Richard Schultz. I'm the, uh, local history nerd for Cadillac, the unofficial title that I've accepted for myself. Um, I'm on the board for the Historical Society, run Cadillac, Michigan Historical Tours. We've given almost fifty free history presentations locally since I started, and I am here to talk to you about hopefully a sense of celebration for the community, our hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. Technically, our hundred-and-fiftieth would have been in twenty-twenty-one, but the world kind of took a pause at that point, so we couldn't exactly celebrate it then. So we have one more chance to do it. We're gonna celebrate the hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of when Clam Lake became Cadillac. So that's where we're getting the twenty-twenty-seven date from. Uh, for anyone who is interested, we have a small, uh, committee that's meeting the first Tuesday of every month at six-thirty at the Masonic Lodge. So you can actually get a tour if you want to of that historic building at the same time. But, uh, we're meeting and deciding some things. We'd like to do four smaller celebrations as opposed to one large one, hopefully bring in business in different, uh, times of the year. May twenty-twenty-seven, we're hoping to do a Founder's Ball slash Gala hosted at the Masonic Lodge and kind of co-branded with the Wexford County Historical Society. Period dress, period band. We'll teach you how to do the old dances and all that good stuff. And, uh, potentially an old-timey baseball game as well. The people that are going to be playing from the old-timey band also do old-timey baseball at the same time. So very interesting combination that they have there. In, uh, summer, we're hoping to do a summer celebration. A lot of our business in the nineteen-hundreds was built on boats, uh, tin campers, Model Ts, traveling and things like that. So we're hoping to bring in all of that. Uh, sometime in June of twenty-twenty-seven, kind of co-brand with the William Mitchell State Park for the Tin Can Lizzies, and also bring back the Model Ts. October twenty-seven is my personal favorite one, because that will be more of the actual history stuff. Uh, we're hoping to have whoever wins that election as mayor, uh, sign a treaty, uh, to officially end the war with Manton. We're hoping to have a reenactment of the Battle of Manton as well. The Footlighters have potentially agreed to do that with us, so that we can, uh, hopefully laugh a little bit about some of our history, uh, you know, that happened at that time. December twenty-seven, we're hoping to do a Victorian Christmas and hopefully co-brand with the, uh, general Christmas celebration that we have in the downtown area as well, and that will be another, hopefully, with the Historical Society on as well. So we have four events that we're hoping to do, but the number one thing that I would like to do is we have a monument to kiss, and we have no monument to our town founder. That is, uh, that is, to me, something that I believe that we should take a moment to hopefully correct in twenty-twenty-seven. I have a full hour-long presentation I do on George Mitchell, January in January, at the library for part of my History Speaker Series. I'd invite anyone to come out and see that. If you want the full hour-long version, then I'm gonna kind of condense down to three minutes here. George Mitchell was a proud Civil War veteran. He was the paymaster for the armies in the Western Theater of the War, and he was so good at his job and so good at supervising the potentially millions of dollars that he had to deal with. He was actually kept in the Army until June of eighteen-sixty-seven before he was actually released from his duties. He came, obviously, up into northern Michigan, and if not for him, this town would not exist at all. He was the one who was able to get the railroad moved from going from the left side of the lake as opposed to the right side of the lake, which is where Cadillac is right now, through his connections that he got through the Civil War. He was a one-man booster for this town. He oversaw the growth initially of Clam Lake. He invited very necessary people to come to Clam Lake to settle for the early part of a town. People, the workers were transitory. They needed a reason to stay here in order to build a town. Otherwise, they would just continue moving wherever the railroad went. Uh, he invited the first doctor to come here, Dr. Leeson. He invited a newspaper man by the name of Clark Frazier to come to town to publish the newspaper. In fact, he agreed to buy twenty-five copies of the newspaper every week until it was actually, uh, financially feasible to stand on its own foot. And with Clark Frazier, he got a double because the man was also a school teacher. So he was able to establish the school that came. He invited other mill owners, which technically were competition for him, but he knew that he needed other people to come to the town. He got Jonathan Cobb's, William Mitchell, Jacob Comer, uh, George Shackleton, and Holden Green to come here, which were all other mill owners. He had a philanthropic spirit that I truly hope that more people take with them, a community spirit. He gave land for the public school. He gave land for Maple Hill, the city park. In fact, his people cleaned the park originally, cleared it of the trees. And he gave land for the Presbyterian and Methodist churches, even though not a member of either of those churches originally. All of those lots, he could have sold for more money, but instead he gave them for the betterment of the city itself. He was our first mayor, served on the Board of Education, uh, pushed for public improvements, sometimes anonymously in the paper. If you see a person named Street Correspondent in any of the eighteen-seventies, that's a lot of the time, uh, George Mitchell pushing for things like sidewalks and for, uh, people to rebuild with brick. During his, uh, one year term as mayor, there was an absolutely terrible fire that destroyed almost an entire block of the town. He personally went to Grand Rapids to learn about building with brick and hopefully bring a brickyard to Cadillac in order to push people to build in brick, or else we're just gonna keep repeating this cycle of, uh, fire, rebuild, fire, rebuild. Very costly cycle as well. So, uh, he unfortunately died only about six years after the founding of Cadillac. Tragically, he was thrown from his carriage while riding on Pine Street. And, uh, the, the bitter irony of it is actually he fractured his, uh, skull on that, on a pine stump. He had pushed to stump the roads, which was meaning that they would, uh, remove the pine stumps from the roads. That was a lot of hard work, and no one wanted to really do it. But, uh, as Street Correspondent, he had pushed for that numerous times, and it just never happened. But I truly hope that that gives everyone an idea of George Mitchell. Again, I do do a full presentation. If you look up Cadillac, Michigan Historical Tours on Facebook, all my stuff is on there. But, um, we have been working on getting prices and things like that for a statue. If we have any community partners who would like to step forward to help, uh, fund or help give us ideas on how we can do that. We're obviously just kind of four guys meeting together to decide this and don't have a lot of knowledge of the public things that would come with that statue. So we would appreciate absolutely any help, and hopefully the hundred-and-fiftieth can help bring us all together in a celebration of our town. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Thank you.
Impressive. Thanks for being a history nerd, Richard.
Yeah. Yeah, we appreciate you.
We really do.
Okay. Um, and now we have some public hearings.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, one public hearing this evening. This is, uh, in regard to the consideration of the adoption of an ordinance to amend section forty-six dash four-twenty-seven of our Code of Ordinances. Uh, this is specifically regarding, uh, short-term rentals in our B-three General Business District. Teresa Waldo, our Community Development Director, is going to introduce us.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and community. Tonight, I'm gonna be speaking about short-term rentals in the B-three General Business District. So at the regular meeting on July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, the Planning Commission instructed city staff to prepare and process an ordinance amendment permitting short-term rentals by special land use in the B-three General Business District. The definition of short-term rentals. Short-term rentals are defined by- Short-term rentals are defined by ordinance as a furnished residential unit, including an apartment, house, room, or any living space in a home or apartment that owners rent out for a period of fewer than thirty continuous days in any one month. Short-term rental zone districts. Short-term rentals are permitted by right in the TS dash one, TS dash two, that's the tourist service district, and the B-one auxiliary business district. Short-term rentals are permitted with special approval in the B-two Central Business District. The B-three District overview. To section forty-six dash four two five, the B-three District provides for many diversified business types. This includes most of the uses permitted in the TS dash one, TS dash two, B-one and B-two districts. The B-three specifically permits several lodging accommodations, including residential units such as apartments, motels and group shelters. However, unlike this above district, short-term rentals are not listed as a permitted or special use. Now, your councilmembers, you have a map that was given to you in front of you. And I want to show you that in the B-one area, which is like a mint green area, that's close to the water, that is the B-one. B-two is the light blue area. And B-three is in the red. So that's showing you on a zoning map what that district is and where it's located. I also, in your council packet, give you a list of all of the addresses that were included in all of these parcels. So the proposed amendment of section forty-six dash four two seven of the city zoning ordinance. This section of the city zoning ordinance, which regulates principal uses permitted subject to special conditions in the B-three General Business Zoning District, is amended by the addition of a new subsection eleven, which reads as follow. Principal uses permitted subject to special conditions. Short-term rentals subject to the requirement of Article Six Special Land Uses. Thank you.
If I can, Teresa?
Yes.
Just add a point for clarification for City Council. The original request to the Planning Commission was to rezone the property to a zone that already allowed the short-term rental use by special use permit. And the Planning Commission, after analyzing it and having a public hearing and whatnot, decided that that wouldn't be the best way forward. But rather to simply amend the zone that already exists to allow it through special use permit. What that means, just for complete clarification, is that it's not by right. So on a case-by-case basis, somebody would have to make application to the city to go before the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission would have to facilitate a public hearing and then make a determination as to whether or not to allow that use to occur or not occur. Similar to what is allowed in the B-two district as well. So. Try and help clarify.
Yep. I guess, maybe I could say this after the public comments.
Okay.
So I'll open the public hearing for comments. During a public hearing, you have five minutes to speak if anyone would like to address. But the comments have to be just about this specific hearing. So if anyone would like to speak?
Do I have to sign on again and all that?
Just say who you are.
Okay, hi, Michelle Travier. I just want to say I'm in support of this, you know. It's the business downtown and there's not a lot of places for people to stay since Hermans is no longer a hotel. And, you know, we're talking about growth and progress. And so there you have it. That's my two cents. And so good luck, everybody who's going to apply. And let's move this city forward.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, I'll close public comments on this. And I just want to say that as Mayor, I'm also a member on the Planning Commission. And the discussion regarding this issue at the Planning Commission was so mindful and thorough that it pointed out to me how amazing having that system where issues like this go to a planning commission where there's, you're able to do more open discussion with people in the room and get all that information. And then it was a unanimous recommendation to council to do this. It's something that, it just makes sense. And I just, I just, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say how, what a great job John Puffin does as the Chair of that board. And all of the commissioners are just very, you know, these are your neighbors. These people aren't even on a stipend. They volunteer to be the gatekeepers for the community. The reason that the Planning Commission wants to make sure that it is, has to get a special use permit is because as you look at this district, there are places that are very near private residences. And so we want to make sure that it's, that the use is in a place that is, doesn't disturb a neighborhood. So that's my two cents.
I too went to the Planning Commission meeting and was impressed with the discussion. And so I'm trying to be able to do that for future issues as well because there is a little bit more opportunity to have that public, not only public comment, but the discussion amongst the commissioners. So I was curious though, and why, if this was an oversight that did, or if it was deliberate, that it never had been allowed in the B-three District before? Because it just seems to me like it fits so well since motels and all the other short-term type rental businesses are allowed there.
Well, I'll just jump in. I don't think it was an oversight. I think that, you know, over the last, dare I say, couple of years or so, that we've been debating and discussing the short-term rental issue, where and how it could go. There were certain, I'll just call them pressure points in time where we needed to move things forward and we needed to codify what our practice was. And the best way forward at that time was to just simply look at the B-two District and the TS one and two and B-one. It was not, not something, stretching it out that way is part of a special use permitting process, something that the council at the time was willing to consider. And we also didn't have at the time a property owner that was interested in requesting a rezoning.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Well, this is, it used to be a hot potato issue. It still is. It seems like it's a best case situation for a solution. It doesn't, as you say, affect the neighborhoods as much, if at all.
Right.
So I'd be all for it. No problems here.
Want to make a motion?
I will do that. Make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to amend section forty-six dash four two seven of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cadillac, Michigan.
I'll support it. We'll both support that.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
No, I think when there's, you know, such little discussion or no question, sometimes people, you know, wonder whether we're doing our due diligence. But the Planning Commission does such a fantastic job that if you've been following that process, like, you know, you shouldn't have any questions left. So yes, I definitely support this. I think this was a good recommendation. This was a good route to go as opposed to spot zoning the old tattoo parlor. So I, yes, I support that.
Mayor Shippers?
Oh, yes. Okay, motion carries. Now we're at communications.
Being recommended to approve the display of a banner from October twentieth to the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five for Friends of the Library.
I'd make a motion to approve the display of a banner from October twentieth to twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five for Friends of the Library.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Next.
Being recommended to approve the closure of Chestnut Street between Lake Street and Linden Street from two PM to eleven PM on October tenth, two thousand twenty-five for the Kiss fiftieth anniversary celebration.
I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Chestnut Street between Lake Street and Linden Street from two PM to eleven PM on October tenth, two thousand twenty-five for the Kiss, Kiss fiftieth anniversary celebration.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the closure of Mitchell Street between Cass and Nelson from three thirty PM to six thirty PM on October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five for downtown trick-or-treating.
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Mitchell Street between Cass Street and Nelson Street from three thirty PM to six thirty PM on October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five for downtown trick-or-treating.
I'll second that because it's been so much fun. It has been.
Yes. And I love that we closed the street too.
Yeah, I agree.
Because it's a party, you know, it's great. Makes a good thing. Okay.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Alabas? Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the closure of Hemlock Street between East River and North Park Street from four PM to ten PM on October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five for trunk or treat.
I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Hemlock Street between East River Street and North Park Street from four PM to ten PM on October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five for trunk or treat.
I support. Candy sales will go up quite a bit this year in Cadillac. To you.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. And that's the folks at the Halloween House. If you haven't driven by Down River Street at Hemlock, it's, it's becoming quite a spectacle. There's more people really community-minded. Thank you to them. Okay.
Being recommended to approve the closure of Harris Street between Simon and Shelby from five thirty PM to eight thirty PM on October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five for their first Presbyterian church block party.
So moved. I would like to put that forward.
She got reason? I'll second whatever she's talking about. Stepped right into it, didn't you? All right.
Okay, Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the request to hang purple lights on light poles in the core downtown area during the month of October for domestic violence awareness month.
I'd make a motion to approve the request to hang purple lights on light poles in the core downtown area during the month of October for domestic violence awareness month.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the temporary sign permit application for the Zion Lutheran Church Annual Craft Show as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the temporary signs permit application for the Zion Lutheran Church Annual Craft Show as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, we have an appointment, a reappointment.
We have one more and.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. There was no, yes, go ahead.
Cadillac West Hay Days Festival.
Yes.
So members of the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority have partnered with several local business owners to launch the inaugural Hay Days Festival. This one-day event will take place the first Saturday of October annually. This year, on October four, twenty twenty-five, from nine AM to four PM, Hay Days Festival will include thirty-plus vendors, a petting zoo, touch a truck, hay maze, trick-or-treating and more. This festival is in conjunction with the three-day event taking place at the Mitchell State Park Fall Festival. Mitchell State Park will be opening to the public for an hour of trick-or-treating at four thirty to five thirty PM. Attached is the schedule and draft map of the events that you received in your packet. All events will be taking place on private property. There will be no street closures or items for council to approve. Attendees are asked to please follow the walking path noted on the map. Stay safe and do not attempt to cross M one fifteen outside of the tunnel. City council is invited to join the festivities and be part of the grassroots effort to revitalize Cadillac West.
Thank you. Is this, is this map and this information on the website?
I don't know, but we will make sure it does.
Please do. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
And you make sure that it gets in the paper, please.
Oh, yeah, well, oh, yeah, well.
She doesn't subscribe.
I'm kind of, I'm a little off tonight.
Boy, it's a bad ing nut.
Now we have a reappointment.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the reappointment of Kevin Fent to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-eight.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Kevin Fent to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-eight.
Support.
And isn't he already been on for like twenty-four years?
He's, he was first appointed in twenty twenty-one and he is a truly dedicated member.
Twenty oh one, maybe.
Twenty oh one.
Two thousand one.
Two thousand one.
So this is the kind of dedication that comes to these boards and it's fantastic. So, and he still wants to hang in there. That's great.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, Marcus?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Just a few items under the manager's report this evening. First one is a recommendation regarding digester slide plates. I do have our Utilities Director here, Jeff Dietlin, who can provide much-needed details if you guys would like them. But in short, these slide plates that are on the digester, which is a part of the wastewater treatment facility. In fact, I think you saw a video of it that showed the digester, have completely worn out, need to be replaced. This is a situation where the, the replacement of these slides may or may not fix an overall problem that we're having with a lid and the float mechanism on the digester itself. But this is a good sort of first step in trying to remedy the situation. The slides are produced by a single source, which is the manufacturer itself of the digester. And so as the communication refers, West Tech did submit a quote for nineteen thousand five hundred forty dollars for the parts. We do have funds available in our Water and Sewer Fund and the request this evening would be to first way bidding and then to approve the acquisition of the slides from West Tech in the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred and forty. Again, if you want to hear more about how a digester operates or the slide situation itself, Mr. Dietlin is here.
Oh, Jeff. How long have the slides that we have been there and what's the expectant, expected life, life expectancy? I'm having a heck of a time.
Life expectancy.
Thank you, young man. Continue.
Two thousand and three, the slides were put in. I don't know if they give a life expectancy on them, but what's happening is it's a, what we call a floating cover in the digester. So as gas is produced and we store the methane gas, that cover rises and falls. And the cover is actually starting to tilt now when it rises. So we, we do believe the slides are causing that tilting. But we have to replace the slides first to make sure. It could be that the weights on the underside of the digester cover, there's. on the underside of the digester cover, there's multiple bricks or or cement blocks that are tons and tons of pressure uh of weight there, that those might have shifted, so uh the ultimate fix might be lifting the whole cover off, repositioning those blocks, and then putting the cover back on. But this is the first step to see if we can solve the problem without going that deep.
It might sound strange, but I'm kind of interested in looking at that. Can I come out next week?
Uh, looking at the slides?
Yeah.
Or the, yeah, yeah, you can come out anytime. Uh, you can't see the heavy blocks underneath, that's in the digester.
I don't want to go there. But, um, yeah, I I can't visualize, I'd like to see it.
You just call my office, I'll make a time, either I'll take you out or one of my guys will take you out and.
Sounds good.
Alright, thank you.
I would make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding purchase of digester slide plates.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Angles?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
And then I'll make the motion to authorize the purchase of digester slide plates from West Tech in the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred forty.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Angles?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, the uh next request is a is a request for a motion of support uh regarding uh our future grant application for the Chestnut Street Railroad crossing. Um, this is something that um, you know, we're we're jumping on, uh, we know that it is in terrible condition. Um, there is an opportunity uh to perhaps receive uh outside funding through the Michigan Department of Transportation Local Grade Crossing Service Program. Uh, and part of the application process is to get local support from the city council, a couple of things that I think would be important to mention. Uh, one is that it does require us to also work on uh adjacent street, and so as you'll see in the communication, we're referencing uh doing work on remaining section of Chestnut Street extending to Lake Street uh that we would look at putting in our uh basically our twenty, would it be our twenty seven program? Not twenty six program, right?
Well, it depends on when the grant funds are available.
Okay. Okay, but but essentially not far out, it would have to be a a capital projects program that would be sooner versus later, so the communication references twenty twenty six. So also, um, I believe a sixty forty split, uh, so the grant is fully funded at a hundred percent with sixty of it coming from M. dot and forty percent of it coming from Great Lakes Central Railroad, so you know, the city's cost in all of this would be whatever the cost is in doing the adjacent road roadway improvements or roadway repairs. Uh, but it's as far as our recommendation, something that would be highly recommended that we pursue.
Yeah, that's in bad shape, but I'll also like to add, in the future, Connie and I talked to you briefly about that, the Wright Street Railroad tracks, which are equally bad if not worse, because that's where I broke my femur on. So, wasn't you, I have a personal, I have a personal dislike for those railroad tracks, but that could be put on in the future, because those are, I think the Wright Street tracks are actually worse than the Chestnut.
Our city engineer is here, and I guess Connie, if you can go up to the microphone. Um, s- sorry to put you on the spot.
I'd like to also make a comment and toot my horn just a little bit, because my son works for M. dot, and he drives those tracks all the time, they live, you know, just outside of Cadillac. Um, been going to uh football games and band practices and all that for years. Anyway, he's the one that told me about this particular grant program that I don't think Owen was aware of, and so I told my son, Trevor French, to send me the information from M. dot, which I then forwarded to Owen, and now the team is on it, including Connie here, who I know has done a lot of work to pull this together, and I'm just so excited that we're getting uh uh this application prepared, and um this only started about, I don't know, back in April, maybe, um,
Good job.
when um I, or when I sent the email to Owen, and so it's just really exciting for me to be a small part of the piece of this puzzle of bringing good governance together with city, state funding sources from M. dot, um, and then the railroad, I'm sure, has federal funding sources, anyway, it's all really exciting.
Do.
To see it all come full circle here, now I realize we're only at the application process, but, and Trevor told me, he says, if you don't get it in twenty six, reapply in twenty seventy, he said, once you get your application prepared, you just keep reapplying, and eventually, he said, go get it, because, um, yeah, we deserve it.
Thanks.
There you go. Connie, do you have any um, any idea about timing in regards to Wright Street, is there a way to double up, is it one at a time?
Um, they are working, the railroads are working on their estimates right now, it's a super competitive program.
Yes.
So, um, Great Lakes Central isn't the only railroad putting in for it. Um, I I'm aware of them, I think they're doing three or four. Um, I can talk to him and see if he can put another one in, um, but uh it, yeah, I I think it's pretty rare to.
It's a statewide competitive.
Yeah.
Program, so people of municipalities from all over the state are applying for these funds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I I don't know if we can get another one in this year, but certainly next year. Yeah.
Do the best you can.
Thanks, Connie.
Yes, yes, yes.
Don't, don't go too far.
Okay.
For the next one.
I'll hang.
Yeah. So.
I'm gonna make a motion, strongly make a motion to support the local agency highway railroad grade crossing service improvement grant application.
Second.
Councilmember Angles?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes. Do we still need Connie or can she?
For the next one.
Oh, for the next one, right, okay. Oh, right. Is it me or Mark? Somebody just makes them.
Ca- uh, Sandy, did, oh, you're set, okay, I'm sorry, no, it's still me.
We're on to.
Yeah, I, yeah, we're on, we're on, we're on to, we're on to the last one, yeah, sorry, I didn't realize what was done. Uh, so, uh, for so- some of you on city council, this might sound familiar, the uh shared streets and spaces grant, or the S. 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 G. Uh, program that we were successful in receiving uh two hundred thousand dollars from uh quite a, quite a while ago. Um, uh, this was a a program to help us uh use outside funding for four key areas, uh, one is uh pavilion structures uh at the trailhead, the Cadillac Commons, uh, and at the the Haynes Street Micro Park, this is the facility that's just adjacent to the Clan River Greenway uh to the west and Inland Lakes Company uh to the east. Uh, green uh pavement markings for bike lane delineation, uh, wayfinding signage, uh, in addition to uh acquiring tables and chairs for the market uh at Cadillac Commons that could be used and rented out and so forth. Uh, so not just for city functions, but for uh folks that rent the facilities that also may want to rent tables and chairs, will have the ability uh of having that available. Uh, and so, uh, we did receive uh quotes for the pavilions, uh, and for the the green uh markings for bike lanes, uh, uh, for uh wayfinding signage, we are uh also uh looking at a a sole source, uh, and for the uh furniture, for the tables and the chairs, uh, we are requesting council give us the ability of essentially going online and and looking at online merchants, these are merchants that won't bid, uh, versus going the traditional bidding route, uh, and having engineer, uh, excuse me, engineering, um, uh, essentially looking and trying to acquire that as as value minded and as value conscious as possible. Uh, the recommended um action this evening uh would be for city council to waive the the bidding and authorize the spending of the shared streets and spaces grant funds that we have, again, these are outside funds for the wayfinding signage and furniture in accordance with the estimates and information that's in the packet. Uh, grant funding for these amenities have already been received, and an appropriation for this project will be included in an upcoming budget amendment. Uh, and I believe, and Owen can clarify if I'm wrong, but any dollars that, of course, that we don't spend, they do go back to the state on this?
Yes.
Well, yeah, but we can also reallocate them to, you know, within the four parts of the grant.
Okay.
What we talked about, and again, tonight is just the signage, because that's a great partnership with what the Visitors Bureau and and their group is already doing with the really nice triangular type signs and theme signs that are already popping up all around.
Right.
And then, um, we're bidding street line painting over the winter to to do our streets first thing when the, when the winter breaks. So we're gonna include the green painting in that, and then do a little bit of additional work on the pavilions, which those would be expected to be built in the spring as well.
I'd make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding wayfinding signage and furniture.
Support.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Angles?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
And then I'd make a motion to authorize the spending of shared streets and spaces grant funds for wayfinding signage and furniture in accordance with the estimates and information presented.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Angles?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, on to adoption of ordinances and resolutions.
Yes, uh, we do have, I believe, just a couple uh this evening, uh, actually a few this evening. Um, uh, the first one uh is a request for a resolution of support uh to basically cooperate in support the Downtown Development Authority's application uh to the Michigan Main Street uh Select Level Program. And um I think it's important just to reiterate uh to uh city council and to the public and and general community, uh, when our prior community development director, uh, John Wallace retired, John's um, uh, job duties also included being the director of the Downtown Development Authority. When we brought, we we did bring on board Teresa Waldo, who you've heard from several times, including this evening, as our new uh um community development director. All things, you know, uh, planning, zoning, uh, economic development, um, you know, permitting, everything in that arena um is under her her umbrella. The Downtown Development Authority Director, uh, Position and Responsibilities, um, then got merged with a new position that we were required to create as we are in the process of becoming a fully certified Main Street USA community. We were required to create a Main Street Program Manager. So we now have, and he is here this evening, along with, by the way, our our Downtown Development Authority Chairman, uh, but we have Travis Owens, uh, as our new Downtown Development Authority um Director and Main Street Program Manager. Uh, as an aside, especially in light of all of the conversation that has has been going on recently this evening about the use of the market at Cadillac Commons, completely separate from the Cadillac Farmers Market, the Downtown Development Authority uh and city have been talking about ways of looking at at bringing more activity to Cadillac Commons, to the downtown. One of those things that has that has been in conversation now for quite a while, this is not something that just came up today, was to create our own market. Um, I cannot sit here today and tell you that it will look like, you know, any traditional farmer's market, it might, it might not, it might include all sorts of other things as well. But having the Main Street Program um facilitate and host s- uh activities in our downtown spaces, not just the market at Cadillac Commons space, but in other spaces within the city, is certainly um a goal uh of that program, and so, sorry for the the aside, uh, but I just wanted to to clarify that it is not because of one thing or another, it's on its own separate trajectory. Um, all that being said, again, this evening, uh, we are looking for city council's support uh through the passage of the resolution that'll help us elevate to the next level of certification within the program. If there's any questions, uh, again, we have both Travis here as well as uh Steve Burns uh here as well, so.
Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
No, so this is, this is a five year commitment um to the select program, is that what we're voting on?
Yep.
And the reason we have to commit for five years?
It's under the the national standard for the Main Street Program, it's the requirement.
What's our financial commitment for the five years?
Do you have that offhand, Owen, with the dollar amount, is I know that it's being funded through the DDA's coffers, um, but I don't, I don't know the number offhand, unless Travis, do you have any?
For salaries and things, that commitment?
Just the general financial commitment of the city, is that what you're asking?
Um.
I I don't have that number available tonight, but I'm I'm happy to get that to council.
No, I was just wondering.
Yeah.
No, I'm a big supporter of the Main Street um program, and I think this is a another good step, so.
I'd make a motion to adopt a resolution to support and cooperate with DDA's application of Michigan Main Street Selection Level Program.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Angles?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, um, Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, next item uh is a request to adopt the resolution regarding uh the setting of a public hearing for the Copper Trail Duplexes Brownfield Plan. Uh, the public hearing date, um, and I do appreciate everyone's willingness to make it, uh, would be at four o'clock on September twenty sixth, uh, twenty twenty five, so a week from Friday. Uh, the reason for the special uh meeting to accommodate is for the uh developer to be able to make deadlines with the state of Michigan uh that they have, uh, in terms of getting everything to them uh before the end of this month. Uh, and by the way, our public uh meeting schedule is as compared to when we were able to get this in front of the Brownfield Authority, and balancing the legal requirements for public noticing, there just wasn't any way to do it other than to request the special hearing for September twenty sixth. Little bit about the project, um, and you'll hear certainly a lot more about it again on the twenty sixth, but it's a duplex project, um, eighteen units, um, uh, half of them uh would be income verified with target rents qualified, uh, households at eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. Uh, again, utilizing the very same brownfield tool that this board has approved uh for the other host of uh new residential developments, kind of like lofts, Cooley School redevelopment, North Lake Street flats. This is the the device that uh everyone really needs in order to get across that finish line, close the financing gap, and be able to build um build residential units, and so this is um a product that we really don't have much of at all in the city, um, and would be nice to see occur. So again, the request this evening is to set the public hearing accordingly.
And this is not the first time we've done this, we have done this, and my, you know, I've been here forever, almost, and um it's several times we've we've done this, so there's nothing fishy going on, this is times and dates and getting everything in a row, so.
And it's all public and it's publicly noticed, yeah, absolutely.
Anybody?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution regarding Copper Trail Duplexes Brownfield Plan and set public hearings for a special meeting on September twenty sixth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Councilmember Angles?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, um, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, uh, I think Connie is still here, if we need her, yes. Sorry, yeah, saving the best for last here. Uh, so this is, th- this is something else that um that started many years ago, uh, started with the uh construction of the first phase of Cadillac Lofts, and um, you know, now, uh, we are where we are, where the first phase is done and the second phase is is upon us. Uh, and uh we are looking uh essentially for council support um by adopting the resolution that will help us apply for a community development block grant that'll be administered through the Michigan State Housing Development Development Authorities, my, you know, play on words, Michigan, uh, neighborhood program, uh, that would include the commitment of matching funds that we have on hand that we had uh gotten on hand, again, many years ago as a part of Phase One, of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and authorizes uh me, the city manager, to then sign as the authorized official. Uh, this uh, uh, this grant that we're seeking uh would fund the construction and engineering of Chapin Street between Mitchell Street and. between Mitchell Street and Shelby Street, which is adjacent to the Cadillac Lofts, uh, project. Uh, in addition to street reconstruction, the improvements will include water main, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and on-street parallel parking and concrete sidewalk. It's important to note that the on-hand dollars are dollars that the city gets reimbursed for through the, uh, through the Brownfield that's on the site. So that was a point of contention years ago about, well, why is the city writing a check? We're not, we're not writing a check. The money that, that is coming out, we had originally bonded for, and those proceeds that we have get paid back to the city through the development itself. Um, so instead of the developer being reimbursed, these are public, city-owned infrastructure pieces. The city gets reimbursed, and the city owns the sidewalk, the public sidewalk and the public streets and whatnot, they're not owned by the developer. Um, uh, just to give you sort of an order of magnitude, uh, the, uh, amount of the Community Development Block Grant that we're applying for is eight hundred seventy-three thousand two hundred dollars, uh, which again will require the leverage fund of the four hundred and sixty thousand. Um, and twenty twenty is the, the date, uh, that this was originally acquired, those dollars. So, um, again, part of the process is that it requires a resolution and support by the legislative body for us to apply. All right, I'd make a motion to adopt a resolution to apply for MSHDA Michigan Neighborhood Community Development Block Grant administered through the MSHDA Michigan Neighborhood Program, which includes a commitment of the matching funds of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and authorizes Marcus Pichia, city manager, to sign as the authorized official.
Support.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Allenboss?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to our final public comments. Remember that you, for this one, you have three minutes, and again, all rules apply. Cordial in the House, and, um, we won't answer your questions, we'll deal with them at good of the order or privately. Okay, with that, I will open our second public comments.
Hi, Sherry Ellenboss, and I somehow, I don't know if I zoned out, but I missed the market at Cadillac Commons facility update. But I just wanted to let you know that the upgrades that were made at the market are just absolutely phenomenal. We have received so many positive comments that it's, it's just amazing. And the bathrooms are a big winner. Now, speaking about the bathrooms across the road by the lake, um, when you cross that road, there is painted, a painted area for people to walk on. Um, but we have had some close calls over the past few years, um, where people don't stop. Now, the painted road, or the painted, the paint, the crossway, is, uh, is supposed to be safe where people are supposed to stop when they see pedestrians, and they don't. So, um, uh, maybe a sign like we have from the parking lot over to the market that says, uh, stop when pedestrians are present. I don't know if there's room for it, but it would be really awesome if it was there. Um, but I, we can't thank you enough for all of the upgrades that have been done at the market, it is beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name's Carla Moore, and I live in Cadillac. Um, I just had a quick question if we could possibly get an update on the, I think it was eight hundred thousand dollar grant that was applied for to hook up some of the city houses on Wells and then fix the culvert. I haven't heard anything about that for a few months now, and I just wanted to double check. I think people kinda like, maybe lost track, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Wetzig. Excuse me. So, I was a vendor for a couple of years, and it really was, it was a good experience. Um, they really did a good job running it. Uh, I didn't know a lot of things that were running behind the scenes, I didn't know a lot of vendors, so I never really had conversations with them, you know, but as time went on, when you become friends with people, you share things, and then just accidentally stuff comes out, information that just doesn't seem to match. And, so vendors, as vendors, we all, we were starting to have, hear different things, get different opportunities than others. And so some were, they kinda, they changed the process from being paid, we could pay them weekly, and then she, she just decided to change it where you pay for the whole season. And so with that being understood, it was like, ah, I can't afford that, you know, I'm like, I'm doing this because I need the mon-, you know, because we need the money, you know, regularly. And so, and so, she was making exceptions for some people, so we all got different emails. And, you know, different things saying, hey, you, you bring in a lot of customers, you know, we're gonna work with you at this. So, you, you know, maybe some got to do, some got to pay, some had to pay for the whole year, while others got to pay for three months ahead, and then some got to pay weekly, like, so it was just very inconsistent, and so for us, that just wasn't ethical. Um, so we had a problem with that. Now, other people have a lot of other problems that I cannot speak to, cause it wasn't mine. So, going on to the Cadillac Market page, um, that comment about Charlie Kirk was made there. So if it was made on her personal page, then that's different, or somebody shared it. You know, people are saying, not the time, not the place, Mary, this is a business page, blah, 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 I don't know. Maybe engaged in conversation there, commented there, shouldn't have happened, it should have been excluded, she should have been the one to say, hey, not the place, let's, you know, talk somewhere else, whatever. But the people that shared their opinions with her, they're like, she blocked us, because we shared, uh, we, we talked about her and shared our differences with her, she blocked us. Where's that freedom of speech that she's okay with? Where's that freedom of speech she wants from everyone? She didn't display it, she just kept blocking people who didn't agree with her. Okay. And then, people, and again, these are things that were shared, talk, this refers to the character of the leadership of the person. The influence that they're gonna have on the people that come to visit, that matters. She, yes, she has her personal opinion, but when that becomes public, okay, and then she's very free with it, what kind of character do you want? What kind of influence do you want for a business for the people? So, people are saying, hey, you gotta stop this, um, it's gonna be bad for the market, and she's like, actually, it's helped the market a bunch, we just sold a bunch of stuff. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, and then, okay, so, pretty much, I'm trying to keep my thoughts straight. Um, there was a vendor who wanted to sell boba, she was told she couldn't sell boba because a coffee vendor. Am I over, over, over? Oh, I thought you were just telling me to hurry!
Yeah, I did it before.
Oh, I'm so sorry!
If you could just wrap up, give us.
It's just the inconsistencies, some are getting favoritism and some aren't, and that's just, she was talking about it being, um, oh, where's the word? Um, where competition is healthy. She says that, but then she blocks somebody from having a competition that's healthy, so, yes, so I am so sorry, but thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Galvanic. At the farmer's market that I own one-third of, and Sherry Ellenboss owns one-third of, and Emily Miller owns one-third of, people pay as they can, they pay by the day, some pay by mon- month, the month. I only have one vendor that paid by the year ever, and that was their choice. Uh, we do make, um, if you don't have your vendor fee, we, we honestly, we'll wait till the end of the day. You can get us next week. Uh, if you didn't make sales today, we are flexible to you. Um, we are very, very good to our vendors, that's why there's over sixty of them on Fridays, if you weren't good to them, they wouldn't be sixty. Uh, we are very, very, very fair, we make all of our decisions as a team, Sherry, Mary, and Emily. Mary does not make any decisions by herself for the Cadillac Farmers Market. I do not make any decisions by myself. I am one of three people on a team that makes decisions for the market together. I do want to thank everyone for their support tonight, I wanna thank everyone for their continued support at the market, for your support to choose equality, for your support to stand up for minorities, for your support to stand up for the marginalized people in our community, I thank you, Cadillac. Thank you for showing that we are a place where everyone can feel safe, thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, I'm gonna close public comments and move to the good of the order.
Well, Sherry, you're, you're a hundred percent right on both things, the bathrooms are wonderful. Went over last, two weeks ago, and very nice. And the crosswalks, nobody in this town pays any attention. And I know because my wife and I have been carrying water, my wife adopted the flower garden in front of the skate park, so I get to come along and carry water over. And you take your life in your hands, and, and Adam's over there, I see him, and they put the sign up, you know, stop. But usually by the time we get there, somebody at two in the morning is running over a few times. It, it is, it's a common problem, and you know, we need signage, the more, the better.
And we need to tell people that if someone's in the crosswalk, for heaven's sake, stop, it's the law. Pedestrians have the right of way.
It's like they speak.
Do we have a crosswalk attendant on Fridays?
Probably.
Probably not.
Just thinking it'd be a great deal.
Let's, wait, wait, not a, not a debate.
Do I get the?
This is good of the order.
Do I get the orange strap?
You could do it.
With the signs?
Not, this is good of the order, this isn't a.
Next.
Next. Marcus?
Um, I, I can address a question that was, that was raised regarding the status of, uh, funding. Um, we actually, um, it wasn't eight hundred thousand, it was, is like n- nearly eight million, or probably over eight million when you were to, uh, add both the, um, uh, connecting, uh, private, um, homes to the city's main, uh, water main, as well as building water main where it doesn't exist, and then connecting people to it with the, um, uh, culvert situation that's happening, uh, adjacent to the We- Wexford Jewelers off of Mitchell Street. Uh, it's the same answer for both, which is, we're still waiting on the state of Michigan to, to hear our fate. Um, you know, we've put in, uh, you know, uh, several sort of sticks in the fire, both, uh, requests for special appropriation as well as, uh, an actual appropriation as a part of their overall budgeting process. But we have not received, uh, any, you know, definitive word yet, uh, as to the success for either of those projects. And so it's still a wait and see.
But people can contact their legislator, and also you can contact the chairs of the Appropriations Committee.
Yep.
Down at, in Lansing, so please do that. Your voice, you know, um, as you could see, people's voices are heard, so.
Yeah, and our, I, I will say, our legislators, uh, they've been very supportive.
Yes, yes, so contact the chairs of the committees and other legislators, our neighbor legislators. Anyone else?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna read this. Um, you know, I struggled today whether I should say anything tonight about what's been going on, and whether I could contribute anything to the local discussion. I got quite a few emails, um, screenshots, and I read a few of the social media posts myself. Um, first of all, um, the idea that anyone who doesn't fit, um, into our own personal model of what a good person is uh, shouldn't get services, or shouldn't participate, or should leave town, um, is a very toxic idea that I disagree with. Also, the idea that you can point to a person and say, you're what's wrong. Um, you're not really a good person, or not a real Christian, and you are why people don't have trust anymore. You know, I think that's a toxic idea to take, uh, a superior position, um, about someone's worth. But I do believe that everyone deserves their freedom of speech, and the First Amendment prohibits the government from infringing on that right. While the city can address complaints about conduct tied to events at the market facilities, we cannot police or punish the private speech of an individual that rents from us, even if over seventeen hundred people signed a petition against that speech. You know, second, um, I spent a lot of last week, um, watching the news. And one of the thoughts that I wanted to share with you comes from the National Governors Association. Um, and that is the thought that we need to disagree better, because we've forgotten how to persuade without hating each other. Um, one of the governors said, we can stand firm on our beliefs and principles, but we should never forget the dignity of the other human being. We don't need to stop talking, we do need to relearn how to argue with each other and how to disagree better. You know, earlier this year, we had a member of our own council resign because they felt unsafe, and they were threatened with violence. Um, our city manager and his wife were threatened. Um, in June, uh, the person who made those threats, um, was jailed. Um, you know, on social media, um, on the post where the, um, judge, um, spoke about this, um, you know, someone left a comment that said, if someone was looking to blame anyone other than the person who committed the crime, they could blame the people who have had a lack of transparency and lack of accountability. And went on to say leadership had created a mental health crisis, implying that the people who receiving, the people who are receiving the threats, um, were to blame themselves. As a parent, I tell my kids to have their own standards, I tell them that there are lines of decency that you cannot ever allow yourself to cross, that there are standards you set for yourself that cannot be dependent on what is going on in the rest of the world. Circumstances and situations are always changing, but don't ever use that as an excuse for your own bad behavior, or for your own bad choices. I think political violence specifically, and threats of political violence are especially insidious because it makes us all, uh, think twice about participating in the public discourse. It prevents us from working to solve the problems that need to be solved, whatever you think they are. Um, the tragic assassination of Charlie Kirk at a college campus last week has made things much, much worse. It's gonna make solving problems harder, it's gonna make having a conversation harder, and it's made the future seem less hopeful. Now, I know a lot of people out there feel like this moment is the start of something. I hope that it's the start of something good, I hope it's the start of positive change, and the beginning of positive discourse, that's all.
Thank you.
Good job, Robert.
I appreciate what he said.
And maybe here in our little town, in our little city, we can start looking at each other as neighbors again, and speak to each other as neighbors, and realize that the people here are doing the job the best they can, and the people there are doing that job too, so, um, thanks, Robert, and with that, Brian Ellenboss.
The one thing, you, you, you touched briefly on it, and the one thing I grow tired of is there's a lack of trust and transparency. Here we are, you all got my phone number, I talked to two people today, you want me to come over to your house, I'll come over to your house and talk. You wanna talk to him? You talk to people, they wanna know transparency, give them a call. Don't throw the trust and transparency up and then just sit there.
Right.
Come talk to us, come talk to him, we're readily available. That's it, now you can bang that thing.
Meeting adjourned.